To have a foundation on before they can build upon it from second grade where they work on comprehension and really breaking apart tax. So this was.
Your experience was the number one driving force behind the standards?
Right. And we also looked at what kindergarten was expecting from them and okay, that's what they expect. So by the end of first grade, they should be able to do this. And second grade teachers shouldn't have to be teaching these. They should be able to hit the road running when they get there. And so, did I answer your question?
It does. I just don't know if the, you know, how it goes with other standards like college and career readiness standards or industry standards for other districts across the state. I mean, is this bar really high? Is this bar average? You know, where are we at and how do we, how do we know that we're getting all that we do?
These are all, they all had a copy of the standards with them.
Okay.
And the, you know, the language and the math. And they looked at where kindergarten had, what they had ready and what they needed to do to make their standards be ready to come in, flow right into first grade and take off with those standards. So this group had a look at first grade standards and summed it into words that parents can understand and that would, that would put all of the standards together the best they could so that they can reach these and be able to make it ready for the second grade standards. Yes, it was standard.
So it's very custom for our district?
Yes.
Okay. Great.
So do they, so do they double from last, the year before? So like last year, did they write 160 numbers? Is that, is that how you do that? Double everything or?
No. The 120 came from the Common Core curriculum. They're expected, um, when they leave first grade to be able to write numbers to 120, recognize numbers with 120. So that's where we got those pieces of the data from there.
That's not just a random number up there.
Okay.
Yeah. And kind of my point here is that, you know, the government's not in your business telling you this is, this is what you need to do, right? This is you as an educator saying this is what needs to be done and you're doing it, right? It's college and career readiness as a guideline plus your experience and your professionalism put with it to compile a rubric, a list of checklist that these kiddos need to have in their skill set and they go across the hall, right? Which is what our district is really good at supporting. Your individualism as far as being a teacher and your professionalism to accomplish that goal. So, um, kind of a roundabout way, but I was really trying to get at the fact that this is awesome and creative and one of a kind and that's another reason why we're so proud that our district is doing and allowing this to happen.
But even with that, they field tested it. They took a couple students apiece and they kind of worked through it to see if this rubric was really going to be what they wanted.
Right.
So, do you want to talk for that?
Uh, we, yeah, we, after we did these and picked these scores, we kind of did a cut score, kind of filling out what would be appropriate for a first grader at the end of first grade. And then we went to our classrooms and we all picked, um, three varied levels, like an on, below, and then an above, and then saw what the scores would be to make sure that it was fair. We didn't want the bar too high. We want it to be, um, exactly where it needs to be for them to be successful in second grade, but not too high. And yet, not too low either. I mean, if we're going to do, do this, we don't want it to be not high enough. Does that make sense?
Yeah. Oh, completely. You know, so you're not teaching to the lowest common denominator.
That's right.
And a lot of these things, we started with the kindergarten that you guys approved last year. We started with that and we built from there. And then with Amber's expertise in second and third grade, we said, okay, from kindergarten, where do we need to go through first grade to get them ready for second grade?
Great. Sorry for the interruption, but I just thought that was very important that we discussed a little bit. Lori, do you have something?
I'm sorry, I'm going to interrupt some more. Um, and I think a lot of this is because of some things that happened over the weekend as well as things that have been going on in the legislature this entire time is why I think maybe Lori and I are focusing on this particular slide. So I apologize for, I don't know, maybe trying to get some-
You have a political statement in here?
Yeah. Um, so, under No Child Left Behind and now under College and Career Ready Standards, how, would these have fit under No Child Left Behind?
No.
They would have?
Yes.
Okay. Um, are you being, okay, we had two different sets of people saying, some saying it's too hard, some saying it's too easy. Where do you think this fits?
I don't think this fits. I don't think you could have done this under No Child Left Behind, honestly. I, I don't think so because I think that you would have had to spend, you would have had of like, another catchphrase Laura likes, a wide area and an inch deep. I think this is, you know, you're honing in on your, your, your standards and you can really delve in and spend more time with metacognition and getting the kids to think and answer questions when they don't know the answer and-
I don't think you had time to do that with No Child Left Behind.
But I, you're the expert.
I don't know, I, you ladies might think different, but from what I've seen my teachers do in the past, it's always been that we're making a push for writing, we're making a push for, and to, to get their standards up and mapped. I felt like we were trying to go a little farther than No Child Left Behind. And, uh, I mean, word for word, I don't know, but I still think, I mean, we were still doing the CVC patterns, we were still doing the comprehension, we were still doing the high frequency words. But wording's a lot different. Um, if we went back to No Child Left Behind right now, uh, with where our kindergartners are coming into first grade, um, I think we'd be doing it justice.
Right.
Whether we hold it, you know, whether it's the Common Core or not, we've got, we've shown that kids can do this. And, uh, it's just a matter of how hard you push them with No Child Left Behind.
So do you feel like this is a, a more rigorous and more demanding standard that we've had in the past?
Yes. And I think a lot of that had to do with what we're, what I, personally, what I think already with my kindergartners that are going to be into my classroom, we had to, that was a big factor when we were deciding these, is to make sure that it wasn't too low because we haven't had those kindergartners in our classroom anymore. So what we're going, what we expect now is going to be a little bit different than what we're going to expect, um, next year. Because the kindergarten's coming in, there's one class, they're already writing six sentences. Um, I haven't seen that before. And so I think our level has to be higher just because of what, what kindergarten has done already and now that's going to be flowing into our classrooms.
And I guess that's what I was saying. My, like, like she said, I've got some kindergarten kids that are writing six sentences, but they were doing that to score depending on how far the teacher pushed them. So it might look different class to class, but they were able to do these kinds of things. But No Child Left Behind required them.
One, one thing we want to understand too is this is not all we're teaching.
Oh, definitely.
Like, we, you know, but when, when we presented to first grade, I mean, this is the bare minimum of what we're expecting you when you're done with the first grade to be able to go to second grade. I mean, we go beyond that.
And what we did, we did present this to first grade teachers. Um, we had a meeting with them and they, they like these standards and they agree with us.
Lori, do you have anything to add to that?
Yeah, that's-
Okay. Mark, go ahead.
Some of this, I think, has to do with apples and oranges too, of course, because, of course, assessment, how he says it, what is success, is really, there's a freedom for the team here to, as they develop this process of these standards and even recognize there's an accelerated class, uh, class coming up next year. There's freedom to teach.
Yes.
And, and you don't, you're not teaching to the test, you're teaching now to standards you know they can achieve, not too high, in some way are sufficiently high in order to get them ready for the next grade and, and what they, they ought to know. And all within that format of, of college and career readiness. So it's really, you know, the teachers are doing similar things in the classroom, but the method of collaboration and how we measure success is different. And, and it's exciting now, I think.
And one thing with this format is it's going to be consistent throughout the district. It's every first grade classroom is going to be expected to meet at least these standards and then beyond.
I saw the list of who was on the committee and that you did have two administrators. Were there any, was there anyone from the central office who was there on a right, real regular basis like Dr. Or-
I was there to facilitate the meetings, but a lot of the work that they did was on their own, so I'm very proud of the work that they did.
Were Doctors Dennis, Marlin, or Atha there?
Thanks.
How many can you count to?
Two.
And you were working on this since October? How often did you meet?
Oh, we met like every other week here and then kind of split into subcommittees and so there's an between meets.
So it was pretty minimal that Dr. Atha was there? Like, Mark-
No one's driving you. Yeah, my point, I get to my point. I just want to have my point stated and then you guys agree with me because I, that's why I'm asking the question first. Because some people say that you, if you don't agree with something like this, that you might all get fired. Did you ever feel any type of pressure to adopt something to a child? Sorry. To, um, adopt something like this? Or do you really, I mean, I know-
They were teacher led.
Okay.
He was there to introduce us and then he came to just kind of hear it empty.
Okay.
And that's the key point to make sure it's said loud and clear, it's very teacher led.
Yes. We've made a lot of very good, strong points. I'm sorry to interrupt your presentation. We will let you get back to it, but, uh, one follow-up just to wrap up this great discussion is that the consist, consistency across our district is going to be the path to be having us become a model district and not just have some model schools there. This is really the foundation for a model district, in my opinion.
If I can interrupt-
Yeah.
-and add to that, Dr. Atha is, as you mentioned, in New Orleans, at a National School Board Association meeting. And he talked about this in a, in a meeting down there, and I'm sure he'll tell me, tell you more about it with his back, but it, what he shared with me is there was a lot of interest on the part of other school board members from across the country in what we're doing because it was teacher-led and it was innovative and it was something they hadn't done elsewhere. So kudos to you and, and the team that put this together.
And you may resume your presentation.
It is, it is-
No, you can't. She's going to talk about that.
A, a new direction nationally.
I just wanted to say that one of the things that, that we all are concerned with is that a child in Kansas will get the same education no matter what their zip code. And I think that down to the district level that this encourages children to be able to have the same education regardless, even though we all have the same zip code, which school that they attend. And I think that's really important to have some consistency, you know, whether you're at one school or another.
Certainly, Jean, same opportunity. And whether they get it or not, there's a lot of factors in there, but certainly the whole framework is there for just that, is what you've stated.
Now, you can resume.
Okay, based on that, what we wanted them to learn, what we looked at after that, we decided, how are we going to assess what, if they've mastered that or not? So we looked at assessments that we already give, the AIMS Web, the DRA, to see how those pieces could fit into what we chose, so, or what was chosen. So we actually created a phonics assessment. AIMS Web, we were able to use a math test and our CPM, thank you, CPM test for both reading and math. DRA assessment, we're able to use two. Um, we look at their fluency score and their comprehension score. Writing, we've actually created a rubric to come up with for the consistency and then some math assessments were created with rubrics also. So consistency, every first grade teacher will have the same assessments, same rubrics across the district to assess those students.
One thing they did that kind of blew me away was they created little scripts for teachers so that everybody would be giving the test the same way. And I could not believe they did that. It took tons of time, but I think it's going to turn out well in the end, so, nice job.
With, I'm sorry, with the rubrics, you're not just, I'm sorry, this is me using data and then also the kid again, um, like I did earlier with another group, but you're looking at the whole picture when you're doing that rubric, not taking the data that you have from the different tests, but also what the teacher sees on an everyday basis. So when your parents hear, oh, it's all about the testing, it's not because you have that rubric in place, correct?
Yes. And there are some tests every kid gets. Every kid will get the DRA test, every kid gets the AIMS Web test, but it was discussed amongst us, we feel like for the benefit of the kids, you shouldn't, I mean, the phonics test, you shouldn't give to every kid. You're just giving it to those kids who you feel are going to need to be retained. But the whole picture of where the kid is at, where we-
So but Jocelyn's just a little bit behind in one area of the rubric measures. There's still going to be a candidate to progress.
Right.
You're looking at an overall, um, um, concern, not in just one or two areas, correct?
And we tried to keep the balance of the rubric, you'll, it'll be up here later, but, um, equal so that if they're high in math and low in reading, it's not going to be-
Which is fairly common, right?
So, I mean, to be, they're pretty equal.
You ready?
Okay, what we're willing to do if they've not learned these, um, tasks that we've asked them to learn, uh, we're going to assume that all students have received equality first education instruction and that comes from the classroom. And we all, as classroom teachers, we receive so much help with our individual teaching. We have, um, staff development, we have, uh, coaches, both math and ELA coaches, that we get a lot of instruction as far as teaching goes and that's going to help to make sure that every kid gets the first, the best possible first instruction they can get. We're also going to assume that all students, um, have the access to quality, explicit targeted interventions along with help from parents. And that's, we're going to bring in the parent piece to make sure we involve the parents and they know right up front what's going to be expected from their first graders for, in order for them to advance to second grade. Also with the targeted interventions, that's where we've done the testing and we've watched the children and stuff and we put them in either a tier one or tier two targeted intervention where they're going to get explicit help on specific, whether it's phonics or math or that area. And then we have the target three interventions, which is an enrichment to help those children that really don't need that extra help for their, to bring up their scores, but they need to be continuing to go on and succeed at a higher level. And then if the rubric scores, um, from the assessments don't meet the target criteria, we would like to have mandatory retention and that if the student was not retained in kindergarten, we will not retain a kindergarten student and then turn around and retain them in first grade. That's totally not our plan.
Okay, this is the rubric and you guys have it in front of you as well. We took the essential skills from, that we saw earlier and we placed them on this rubric that looks almost identical to kindergarten. So as parents are seeing and getting all this support in kindergarten, they're going to see the exact same thing in first grade. So the language art, you see the same things, um, for language arts and for math. We put it on the three, two, rubric. If, if it had a rubric to go with it, we made what would three be, what would two be, what would one be? So it's consistent across the district. Uh, this can be used as a tool for parents and, um, teachers to communicate and also parents always want to know, what is it that my kid needs to know? Here's a sheet of paper, this is exactly what your kid needs to know. And along, throughout conferences along the year, you can mark, you can say this is where your kid is now, this is what we need to do, push them up a little farther, these are the areas you need to work on. And our target skill, or our score that we came up with was 22 percent, which was six, 22, sorry, which was 60 percent. Also, a three does not have to be 100 percent to get a three, it only has to be 80 percent because we're not trying to retain every kid. We're just trying to get the kids who need that help, that extra support.
Well, if a student received a two on every single category, they would have a 24 if they were in math, right?
Yeah.
And that's-
They would go.
That would be good enough to, to go on. Seems very fair.
But again, they field tested, so they have a pretty good idea that this is going to work well.
This would be so valuable if you don't lose for the next teacher to have, they get exactly what, what they need it to focus on.
And for our parent component, it looks very similar to kindergarten's. We wanted to keep it consistent from what parents would see in kindergarten. So I believe you have in front of you the brochure and the brochure shows all of the skills that students will need to know to exit first grade, as well as a typical first grade day and some ideas of things parents can do at home and websites they can use. So the brochure is pretty general information. And then we also created two flip charts, which are, again, similar to the structure that the kindergarten parent components have. So there's a math and a reading flip chart that you should also have. And in there, it goes through every skill and what students need to know and what parents can do to help them with that skill at home.
That's awesome.
And we would like-
No excuses.
Exactly. We would like to give these to parents in the spring so that they can work, sorry, kids who are in kindergarten, we want to give it to them in the spring so they can work all summer on these skills before first grade starts.
Our committee would like for the Board of Education to consider mandatory retention for students who have not mastered first grade concepts according to their final rubric score. We will not recommend a child to be retained who has been held back in kindergarten or first grade. And we actually have some first grade teachers that came out and supported us because we asked them to do that when we had our presentation.
You are not asking for action tonight, correct? That's the next page. Lori, do you have any further questions?
The parents, I noticed it's not in the brochure, maybe it's in the flip charts here. This kind of a sheet here that you were using, parents, will they have a copy of that?
Yes.
You know, I, I guess I was curious about how that three, two, and one applies in your thinking process. I didn't know whether that was really designed for a parent to know or whether that was just a tool for the teachers.
We just followed it behind kindergarten's version because kindergarten, when they sit down with their parents, that's what they, that's the version that they see. So we just carried everything over because those parents are already, already expect that, um, communication and that collaboration. And so we wanted that to be a smooth transition into first grade. And the numbers that go with each three, two, one, they align with what the tests that we designed or we were using for them, which will be consistent throughout all of first grade. So you're not going to go to one school, go to a different school and be tested a different way. And so that kind of, the numbers are kind of for teachers to know where to mark it, but then also you can show the parent, this is the test your child did, this is why they got it to. This is why they-
And I think that's wonderful. When, when you describe the, the narrative on how to even apply the test, you're assuring that that will happen in each school. That's great.
And, and one thing I think that we need to stress is that by doing it this way, we are going to have to have more parent meetings, more parent involvement. We're going, we're not going to just be able to wait until October, parent teacher conference to explain this to them. They're going to have to know well in advance what we're expecting and what the scores mean and how their children are going to get there.
Well, this helps you be transparent with the, with the parents as well. I mean, there's no, I think, kind of leaning towards retaining your child. It's like, the data is indicating, we need to spend some more time getting your kiddo ready for second grade. I mean, it's, it's easier for you to sell that way too because it's backed up, so. It's a great job. Any other questions or comments?
I just had, um, sort of a questions or a comment. One of my concerns, um, with this and with the first grade readiness program is the mandatory aspect of the retention and whose decision that that, that is. I'd really be interested in trying to get some feedback from, um, the current, I guess it would be kindergarten to first grade group, maybe it's first grade to second grade, whichever grade-
Kindergarten to first.
Kindergarten to first that, that we've already, um, kind of gone through a year with before we consider moving this program further. Is there, is there any-
We're in the process of gathering that information. It's not ready yet, but it will be shortly. End of the month, I would think.
Would be able to have that before we continue this?
That's, I, I guess that's a decision the board needs to make when, but we're not asking for action tonight, so I think it's certainly appropriate for you to gather information, to talk to, uh, members of the community and get some feedback and then decide whether you want to take this up next time or delay it to May.
On their rubric, it says that they will have until the end of April to, um, gather those points and everything. So we may not know for a few weeks. So that may be something to consider.
How soon do you need to know?
Certainly before the end of the school year, um, in order to get information from parents.
Sure.
Well, this is with Dr. Atha concerns-
Yeah, that, that's a good idea.
And get some more part, um, timelines on the data that we'll have collected. I know that's been a concern for me and Jean from the very beginning, so.
But just to be clear, I am very much in favor of having a district wide standard that applies to all schools at different grade levels there. And I'm very, um, in favor of the, the intensity that you're working with the students and, and working with the parents, but, but I do think it hinges on, on the parent's right to make decisions for their child. And I think that some of the assumptions that, that you mentioned are not, are not able to, to occur for all children in our district. And, and so those children will be, um, potentially at risk for being retained. And I do believe that there is, um, a very longstanding, perhaps lifelong, um, concept that the child has of themselves when, when they're retained. So I, I would, I think this is a very serious question. I like the program in general. I, I don't think the mandatory aspect of that needs to be continued.
And true, as I've said before, I also believe that there are long-term effects of putting a student in a situation that they're not prepared for. And so if we are truly, our goal is to be consistent, um, I would like the classrooms to be consistent and the students that are there at the same, with the standard deviations of the same category. So that would be the, the opposite of what you stated. I'm not saying which is right and wrong, but for discussion, I think that needs to be brought up.
Jean, I can't speak to the whole district, but I can give you a little bit of, of data from Jenny Wilson from what we've done so far. We've had, I've received paperwork on four kindergarten students and three of them, the parent has already signed, agreed with the rubric. One would like to see that if they didn't want to sign it yet, they want to wait until the end of April to see where their student is. And then we did, I did have one of my first grade teachers try this rubric. They weren't a part of this group, but I just wanted to see how they were going to do it with a parent that we were considering retention with. And the parent came in and went over that this could be a possibility to look at it and she loved, uh, the rubric and was able to see, she goes, so if she did go on, then she's going to be behind in these areas. And we said, we told her, yes, it could be very, it could be difficult. And she goes, you know what? We thought maybe she was a little behind, we didn't know. And again, you know, one thing we always, we always strive for is to make every child feel that, that, and, and again, this would be something we'd have to work for as a district. Communication is, uh, it's a must in this and how we handle the retention. And not necessarily, I don't know, we're working with our kids and they're coming back and being helpers in the classroom and they're, they're learning it and, you know, presenting it to the students in a, in a way that they can accept it. But so far, um, you know, three out of four signed it right away because they've been told all year long what the student needs to know. But again, that's just one school that, that's just a little bit of that.
I, I feel like the retention piece is a very important part of what you're trying to accomplish. Is that true or not? I mean, obviously, the most important part is to get the kids proficient, but as far as this program, do you think you could be successful in this program without the retention piece?
I think it defeats our purpose.
That's kind of how I look at it, but I do want to, yeah. I wanted to hear it from you.
Yeah, I think it kind of defeats our purpose because the, even now, we retain children by kind of a, well, you know, we think they're not as high as they should be to go on to second grade, you know? We kind of think, you know, and the test scores show that they're kind of behind, but this is black and white. Our scores show that they are behind, the rubric shows, you know, they are behind. I think it's more black and white.
And I think, um, back, sorry, back to what Melinda said, if the parents know what's expected to come here, then, because I know when I taught kindergarten, I had a situation like that, so I took the parent to the first grade teacher and said, look, this is, and she was like, okay, I'll sign, you know, once she, so I think if the parents- and she was like, okay, I'll sign, you know, once she, so I think if the parents know what's coming up, and it's consistent among all the schools, then, you know.
You've already started meeting with second grade teachers, third grade readiness. Have you talked about retention?
We have talked about retention, and the conversation there, and Amber's on that group too. The conversation was that we are not going to recommend retaining at second grade level. And this came from the teachers, that really the research doesn't support retention past first grade. So that's not something-
At the third grade level or second grade level?
Second grade.
Second grade, okay.
And doesn't that kind of speak to Jean, some of Jean's concerns, I understand they're broader than that, and sort of fundamental in principle. But if you are ever going to give that child a solid running start into third, fourth, fifth grade, don't you want to be sure that they have those basics for their first level?
I'm sorry, I have a question about, I guess, the wording of the last of your second sentence, about not recommending a child be retained who was held back in kindergarten or first grade. What happens if you have a kindergartner who was retained? So they've gone through kindergarten two years, they're now in first grade, and they score all ones. I guess what I'm hinging on is recommend. I mean, I can understand where you might not mandate it, because they were held back in kindergarten. But what if that child truly is not ready to go to second grade? Is there a conversation that you might be having with the parents? I mean, because there may be some, you might have to be looking at special ed or something else too.
I think that was a lot of hard thought. If they've been retained twice, or repeated a grade twice, come, repeated kindergarten twice, came to first grade, and they're still struggling, there's probably maybe another issue, whether it be special education or something else.
And I know, at my building, in all the buildings, we have the SAT team. So as soon as we're thinking about retention, we go to them, and it's a collaboration. We have, teachers are on it, and we sit down and we say, this is what, this is what I'm seeing in my classroom. And they give us more ideas that are research-based. We have a certain amount of time that we try those extra things, and then we come back. So there's a process that we're going through to even get them retained right now. And so when they come into my classroom, they're already going to be in the SAT process, the Student Assistance Team. And so that conversation is already going, and the teacher that, like, the student that have a kindergarten, I have a folder on my desk before school even starts, showing me what they already tried in the classroom, what they have done, what worked, what didn't work. And so that's the process as far as working towards, if they need to have special ed. We need to have that paperwork and make sure that we show that we have done everything that we can do. Does that answer it? It does. I guess my concern is, it sounds like an absolute. And there's always an exception to a rule. And that's why I'm wondering, is if we want, if we would need to change the language to saying, we will not mandate a child be retained who was held back in kindergarten or first grade. I mean, who knows, maybe this child has suffered a couple of catastrophes in their life, and there were issues in kindergarten, so we had to retake it, something else happened to this child. They're intelligent, but maybe they're just not there to be able to learn what it is that you're trying to teach them. So maybe holding them back to give them that opportunity may be appropriate. Now, I'm not saying, but I'm, you know, it's just kind of that change in language, that I'm not sure if that will help you think, okay, really, this person needs one more shot at this, but we're not going to mandate it. If you want to send them forward, we'll send them forward, if that makes any sense. And I don't know, I'm just asking.
It's a good what-if question.
Yeah.
Something you need to consider definitely.
And are IUPs are all, are they always established at retention time, or is that based on teachers?
They're established at times of year.
Okay. So, would a student that is retained be a candidate for an IUP, or not necessarily?
They're not necessarily connected, but it's a point at which we would ask, is there something that needs to be done differently?
So that piece is always available, if we need it.
One of the things that board policy states is that if a student is retained, they have to be put on an individual learning plan, an IOP. And at that point, then, after they decide that they're going to retain one of the students, they have to write an IOP that states what they're going to do differently the following year, so, yeah.
I didn't know the acronym, sorry.
That makes a little bit of sense.
Great discussion. Any other comments?
Their, that team's dedicated, because they've been standing there this whole time.
They're awesome. You've fielded a lot of questions from us, we don't normally do that, but you've handled it very well, and your information has been amazing.
I think the whole first grade team has been very dedicated. I would like for them to introduce themselves, because I'm so glad they're here to support the role of teachers here. Ronnie Ross.
Hi, Ronnie, I'm first grade at Vio.
I'm Lucy Daniels, and I'm first grade at Florence Wilson.
I'm Samantha Manken, first grade at Florence Wilson.
Hello, Riley, I'm interventionist, I'm a keeper. I just thought you were just about to.
Caitlin Combs, first grade at Florence Wilson.
Caitlin Benzman, first grade at Alter Brown.
Dem Chapel, Alter Brown, first grade.
Caitlin Drucker, first grade at Bart Vio.
Erin Leffler, caemeteries at Vio.
Do you guys have anything to add to what they already said?
Thanks, Riley.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
We do have a comment.
Sorry, I just think that they have put a lot of work into it, and they came to us, and they spoke to us, and asked what we thought. As a district, they pulled as many of us in as we could, and overall, I mean, I thought the reaction was positive. We said this is something that we really support, you know, it's not just a matter of, we think we need to retain. There's data to back it up, there's data to prove it, and it does hold the parents, it does have accountability piece with them as well, so. I support it, I think they've done a great job.
And it does you accountable too, it's not like you're making your job easier. You're willing to put your feet in the fire, so. Good job.
Well, no matter how we decide, I want to thank you for your time and effort, and just like, I'm sorry, just like we stood up for the others, I think that they were-
Yes, of course, standing ovation as well. Good job. And thanks for being here to support us.
Yeah, it's nice job.
Okay, new business, I've asked, we're going to discuss the adoption of a resolution in regards to the school board election process, hospital-